You're watching Cable Two.
Allen Forsyth County Schools Board of Education Meeting. I am Deanna Kaplan, Board Chair. I appreciate your attendance. I say good evening to Cable Two. Will you please rise as we start the meeting with the pledge of allegiance, followed by the invocation given by Board Member Susan Miller?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
B.B. King said, "Education is the most powerful weapon we can use to change the world." So we're going to have a moment of silence in memory of the following: A social studies teacher from Atkins High School, career tech ed teacher downtown school, and two students, one student at RJ Reynolds and a recent graduate of RJ Reynolds High School. Let's have a moment of silence. Thank you. Thank you very much, Board Member Miller. Our first order of business tonight is the agenda review. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda is written?
It's a move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion by Vice Chair Bohannon, and a second by Board Member Crowley. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Thank you, that is approved. Our next item on our meeting is our student performance. Please welcome Nyla Lee from RJ Reynolds High School, who will sing "Part of Your World" from The Little Mermaid.
Hello, everyone. My name is Nyla Lee, and I go to RJ Reynolds High School. And this summer, we did a musical at Summer Enrichment, and I played Ariel. So today, I will be performing "Part of Your World." Look at this stuff, isn't it neat? Wouldn't you think my collection's complete? Wouldn't you think I'm the girl? The girl who has everything? Look at this trove, treasures untold. How many wonders can one cavern hold? Looking around here, you think, sure, she's got everything. I've got gadgets and gizmos, but plenty. I've got who's it's and what's it's score. You want thingamabobs? I've got 20. But who cares? No big deal. I want more. I want to be where the people are. I want to see, want to see them dancing, walking around on those, what do you call it? Oh, feet. Flipping your fins, you don't get too far. Legs are required for jumping, dancing, strolling along down the, what's that word again? Street. Up where they walk, up where they run, up where they stay all day in the sun. Wanderin' free. Wish I could be part of that world. And what would I give if I could live out of these waters? And what would I pay to spend the day warm on the sand? Bet you're on land, they'd understand that they don't reprimand their daughters. Bright young women, sick of swimming, ready to stand. And ready to know what the people know. Ask them my questions and get some measures. Put a fire and why does it, what's the word? Burn. When's it my turn? Wouldn't I love to explore that shore of mine? Out of the sea. Wish I could be part of that world.
Beautiful. Beautiful.
That was beautiful. Wow. Beautiful.
She is absolutely amazing. Brought tears to my eyes. My gosh, she is a star, already a star, but wow. Thank you for setting that tone. That's great. Yes, are you the parents? Are you the parent?
Yes.
I know you're very, very proud. Our next, our next order on our agenda are the public comments. At this time, we will hear public comments on the agenda items only. If you've signed up to speak, remember to sit close to the podium. We expect civility. Please be kind, considerate, and respectful. Direct your comments only to me as Board Chair and not to anyone else in the audience. No, we cannot talk about sensitive, private student or personnel information in this public setting. You have three minutes to speak, and the first speaker is Alan Daniel.
Good evening, Chair Kaplan, members of the board, Ms. McManus. Tonight on the agenda, you're asked to consider the purchase of 7,400 laptops for teachers and staff, which obviously is a tool that they need. However, that purchase is accompanied by a $1.2 million finance charge. My father told me as I was growing up that rich people are rich because they live like they're poor, and poor people are poor because they live like they're rich. $1.2 million would buy a lot of laptops. So I would encourage the board to look into the possibility of only buying the laptops you can afford right now and save that $1.2 million to buy some more laptops. Because what's going to happen is it looks like, and I don't know that I'm understanding this 100% correctly, it looks like you're going to buy 7,400 laptops right now that have a five-year warranty with a $1.2 million finance charge on them. If that's the case, then in five years, we're going to do this again. We're going to be spending $6.7 million, not 5.35, I think is what the number is, 5.35 plus 1.2. So every five years, we're going to waste $1.2 million. Well, to give you, put that in some real terms, $1.25 million over five years would give teachers a $1,000 raise. So please, we talk about there's not enough money in education. The banks have lots of money. They do not need your money. The teachers, the staff, the students need your money. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Daniel. Next, Katie Sonnenleek.
Good evening, Board. I am a parent in the district and also volunteer a lot in the community. I wanted to commend the board for including the evaluation data on the Heart Math Program in the board book or board documents for today. I really enjoyed looking at that. I'm maybe one of the few people who enjoy looking at those things. But I think it's really important for us to put that out there every time that we're looking at doing a contract with, whether it's tutoring or something else, an instructional, SEL. I know we do a lot of different contracts at a lot of different schools. But I think it's really, really important for us to know that this works and to have that data in front of us when we're making these decisions. Because we know that research-based programs, evidence-based programs are where we want to put our dollars because we know they work. Whenever we're evaluating a contract, I would love to see this, like I said. And if there's no evidence that it works, I think we should keep looking, frankly. If you're looking for, I mean, I was on the way over here listening to NPR about contractors and Home Depot's having trouble, whatever. But if you're looking to, you need to renovate your house, you're not going to go with someone who has no reviews or no references or anything. It's the same thing here. We've got a lot of work to do to catch up from the pandemic, and there is even a lot of work to do for our children before the pandemic. And we know we need to work on these things. But we have to do it smartly and with the best resources that we can find. And I also think it's important when we're talking, even after these are approved and we're talking about it in the community, to use this data that we have, like, hey, look, this works. I think that helps create buy-in and enthusiasm for new programs and teaches our students, like, hey, these are the kind of things you want to look at when you're an adult and you're making big decisions about how you want to look at what's the data? What's the reviews? How many TikTok followers, whatever, whatever it is? We want kids to learn how to do that. I mean, I'm thinking you look at that graph with the red and the green. Like, how cool would it be for a math class to look at that and evaluate it? Use our data that they're seeing in their schools to look at those different pieces. I think there's a lot of creativity we can do to both serve our students now and prepare our students for the future and our parents and other community members. And I'd love to see this data for all the programs. I looked back, I know there's a lot of discussion about iReady, but I think that kind of data I would have loved to see when we were having that discussion as well and lots of other ones. So if we can continue to do that in the future, whether it's data provided by the resource or data provided by the district, that would be great. But I'd love, long-term, to see us evaluate all of our programs with a consistent way to do that. Because I think that's something I would love to see, but I don't often see it in our district. Now, it's a big ask, but I hope you all consider it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next order of business is our discussion items. We have five items tonight. First, Dr. Christopher Weickert, our Chief Human Resource Officer, will give us a 2024-2025 staffing update.
Good evening, Board, Chairperson, Vice Chair Superintendent. Standing before you today to give you a staffing update, which is a little unusual because this week, normally, I'm talking about two weeks from now. So we actually have data from yesterday. It's going to mirror very similar to what we did in June. All right, we're going to talk about our leading data indicators, our vacancy data and our recruitment data. Just to think about this summer, we've had 804 separations across our division. That includes teachers, classified staff, child nutrition, transportation, everything. 217 employees have retired. That's due September 1st. We had 435 employees transfer between schools. And then the most important part is we've offered employment to 812 new employees. 599 of them have been cleared to start and have started with our students this school year. That's the number as is effective today. You can see here, I want to point out, and this is going to be a real important thing, is when you think about the early stages of recommendation and orientation, when employees are in that standpoint, the job is still posted. Our employment data right now is very fluid. This data was as effective as this morning. A little while, I'm going to point out you're going to have some data as effective as Friday. So it just, it kind of varies. So those who have calculators, if you notice some of the sums don't equal, please understand, it's just very fluid. It's from Friday to today and then yesterday. So you'll see some people that are posted. So as we think about this morning, we had approximately 70 teaching openings. Yesterday, the superintendent in a press conference announced that we had approximately 100 certified vacancies. And you might ask, wow, that's 30. Yes, we processed that many employees this week, getting them passed. So that's through orientation, past the criminal background check, as well as the drug testing policy to allow them to start, or allow to be cleared to start. Now, that does not mean that all have actually started. Some people are working out notice at other places. Some are still moving to the area. But this is how many people that we have currently in process, ready to start. And we're going to talk about subs in a few minutes. You'll notice our classified data is 43.2. Our total vacancy is 132. Now, that 69.4 was really exciting when I put that this morning. I'm disappointed to tell you today, right now, if someone pulls up ATS, they'll see it's about 78. Yes, we had a few resignations, so we posted them. And we also had a few people decide not to join our team. So it's very fluid. It's going right now anywhere between as low as 62 to as high as 102. This data does not include long-term subs and positions. These are true vacancies where we do not have our permanent employee in it. This, if you can notice it compared to last year, is excellent data. Even at 78 compared to 112, that's 50 more classrooms that are filled with teachers. When we think of our operations, because they keep the buildings moving, you can see there, we're still making progress. Custodians is an area of growth for us. We've recently done some different outreaches there in recruitment. We need to continue to work on, you know, filling those vacancies. Bus drivers, that's 54 bus drivers. It really should say 54 routes. Because some are AM, some are PM, some are both. We have more afternoon routes open than morning routes. First day of school. We had 3,712 certified positions filled. Often, we always look at the half-empty. You're going to see, today, I'm going to talk about the half-field. Our principals and hiring managers and employees did a great job of recruiting folks to join our system. And notice the last group I said, other employees. People choose to join us because of our great workforce. The positive things that we say about our district is our best recruitment effort. We did have 80 vacancies that had substitute teacher in it. We had 10 vacancies that are certified that didn't require a sub. And then we had 12 other accepting additional responsibilities. That could be a TA subbing up. It could be someone covering, taking, splitting a class up. That's a 3,960. So if you want to look at half-field, all right, we're at 97% field. I'll say that one more time, 97%. Last year, the highest we got was 95. All right, we're excited about that. Now, we still have work to do. All right, because if you look to the right here with our most highest vacancies, as of Friday, we had 25 EC vacancies. All right, we got it down to 20 Monday, and then it kind of came back up to 25 again. We have K5, that's all grades, that's 10, nine in math, and six in language arts. There's currently about 14 teachers that are listed as vacancies, but they're working out their notice for us. So when I said things are very fluid, you know, some people are working out their notice for us. Some people, our new people are working out their notice for their others. All right, and we're just, we're going to get through this month. All right, and this season, it'll settle down for us. Some other quick stats I want to give you that's not on this little slide here. I've got my little sheet sheet here. You know, our EC exceptional children, we have 30, we have 25.5 EC vacancies right now. That's a 93% fill rate. That is the area that we're working hard to address. We're going to be taking some recruitment efforts, such as actually pulling data from who used to be an EC teacher from us, and we have their personal email address. And they're probably going to see an email from one of my staff members saying, hey, come back home. You're going to see some other initiatives there. Our ECTAs, we have 32 vacancies there, about 93% vacancies. These are very concerning. We have to serve all of our children in all areas. We have 25 schools with no vacancies. We have 47 schools with three or less vacancies. All right, as far as our substitutes go, 10 of our long-term subs, currently, we have around 60 long-term subs in our buildings. Let me get that exact number right, 60. 10 are certified. 13 of them, all right, were teachers last year who are working on licensure issues. There may be a few more, and I just didn't pick out their names when I was looking down the list. I'm not going to pretend to know all 80-something names of folks who didn't meet licensure requirements. But overall, even in our substitutes, we have folks that are qualified, that our principals are choosing to work for us. Also, in that fill rate, I would denote that we have 33 retirees who have chosen to come back and work for us part-time for the year. That's about 16 full-time positions, because they have limitations. So we're really excited about our staffing rate. However, we still have a lot to work to do. Recruitment effort, we're going to continue our growing our own programs. Of course, we have our virtual alternate pathway to teaching. We did it this summer. We have another one coming up. We have a fall career fair. We have Operations Career Fair that just passed. We have another one coming up in the fall. We've increased our J1 and H1 visa recruitment for teachers. We just had a teacher assistant focus interview day that actually resulted in hiring of 15 teacher assistants. So we're really excited of that part. Now, are we 100% staff? No, we are not. All right, but at 97% compared to where we were, we should celebrate that. People are choosing our system because of our great students and community. Questions, please.
Yes, Board Member Crowley.
Yes, what are we doing looking at the elementary and middle school, especially core subject areas? What are we looking to get those immediately filled with qualified people? And I'm specifically referring to take people who are in other positions in our school system, whether that be at central office or in some type of administrative role, and doing what's best for students by putting them in a classroom?
That's a great question. That's, as we get to our fifth day and we figure out exactly all of our vacancies and where they're at, and know exactly who's, where we have a recommended candidate coming in and what's really a true vacancy. Because having multiple transitions for kids ain't good either. We're going to, we're going to look at all options between placing some administrators, central office staff there. I don't want to say specific role types because I don't need my email box to blow up this moment. But also looking at how we can divide class, expand impact for our certified teachers. It's really important that every kid has a certified teacher. It's, we have to get through that process. And I really don't, can't say exactly how many openings. The number of openings will determine our plan. So I can't give you an exact strategy right now, Board Member Crowley, but the next meeting we will. Is that fair? We're just so fluid right now, it's...
I just want to make sure we don't have people who could potentially be a great teacher and positively impact our students in an office somewhere instead of in a classroom. And I think our priority, as we've stated, is doing what's best for kids. And if that means delaying or postponing a job that needs to be done at central office for however long to make sure that students have a teacher in their classroom, then I'm all for that.
We, and we've done that in the past. And staff has asked me to wait till at least the fifth day as things settle down with enrollment, students coming in to really see what we actually have open. Again, yesterday I said 100, and then Chris shows me this today at 69. I said, darn, the paper said 100. We could have said 69, 30 in one day.
I literally texted, I was like, hey, we're under 60. And then I looked at the dashboard, like, an hour later, and I was back to 72. It was, it was a very short-lived celebration.
And Chris, has that changed because somebody might not have gotten through processing or the drug test or something did not pan out?
There's a lot of variables. It could be resignations sometimes, you know, resignations by the time they get to a specialist with the meetings coming in, getting it processed. It could be someone, they've said they're going to accept the job. They get to orientation, and then another school system, you know, says, hey, I'll move you to third grade. You don't have to teach fourth grade anymore. So they go back home. It occurs at all levels, from teacher assistants to the, you know, teachers. You know, sometimes people make counteroffers.
Will we be doing a survey of our staff to see who's, who wants to go into a classroom for this school year?
That's a great idea. We can look at that.
Thank you.
Board Member Cade.
I'm extremely concerned about EC. I bring this up quite often. And I know that we have 25 teacher vacancies, but we also have 32 TA vacancies specific to EC. And these are also positions that are differently trained, specialized training. And these students need, obviously, different attention oftentimes in some of these positions. So same question, I guess, kind of that Leah asked. What are we doing to utilize folks to make sure that these folks are getting the specialized attention that they need? Because they do have additional needs with five IEPs, et cetera. And what, if any, special recruitment efforts are being made specifically for EC?
As far, well, number one, we have vacancies. We obviously use our substitutes for teacher assistants. The other parts that we're looking, we're going to have to look at is we're going to have to look at just the displacement of all teacher assistants as we get to that five-day count. We have done, like I said, the TA search, and most, a lot of those were filled into EC vacancies. We're going to continue just to have to beat the pavement of looking for folks. We don't have a specific, like, compensation plan or anything like that to, you know, for teacher assistance, EC teacher assistance. However, I think our best course of action, or a very good course, is this, we have to get the word out there from our staff saying, hey, this is a great place to work. This is a great place kids deserve. I don't have a, you're asking a question, ma'am, that I think, we're at 93%. We're better than we were, but we have a lot to work. I don't have a silver bullet answer for you there other than we just got to keep working at it.
Okay, a follow-up question.
Yes, ma'am.
You said that the ECTAs obviously are being filled with subs. Are they getting specialized training to work in the EC classrooms?
They just get the normal training, ma'am, and then what, from their teacher.
Vice Chair Bohannon.
Thank you. So to the point about, just for the record, right now, ECTAs are paid at the same rate as TAs in typical environments?
That's correct. They're at, you're going to make, don't make me a...
You don't, you don't have...
It's around $1,590 or $1,602 an hour, something like that. Yes, ma'am.
Got it. Okay, so has there been any discussion about what the, you know, sort of differentiating the compensation given that this position is hard to fill? Or anything like that?
We have not had that conversation yet. But it's, we're, when we do have the conversation, and it's a conversation that needs to be had. It's going to have to be, we're going to have to look at more than just ECTAs. We're going to have to look at ECTAs, EC 101s. And also, there's other specific, ECTAs have to do specialized duties, such as sometimes catheterizing, I mean, medical situations. So you are correct. It is something, as we present a sour schedule, we have to look at.
Well, and of course, I'm aware that there are budget implications to those types of decisions. I just wondered if preliminarily there had been any type of discussion. Because I guess at, at some point, it becomes to me a question of how, if we're really serious, like, you know, what do we need to do to be serious about recruiting at this point? But thank you.
Yes, Board Member Brown Gather.
I have a question. I always specifically look at math teachers. And I know we had nine openings. So are those all middle school or what? And then, one of the things I noticed on the report that you had previously, it would say one math teacher, like, at a middle school. But it wouldn't say, like, a sixth, seventh, or eighth grade. It would just say math. So that was one of my concerns.
We, the reason we, they vary between middle school and high school. There are more middle school math openings than high school. But it's not, it's pretty well split. I'll get you the exact which schools have the most. I want to say only one school has two math openings, but it's one of our larger ones, and they have people in the, in the works in the recommendation pipeline. The math area, science, EC, they're all, you know, it's just, we're, at this point, we're trying to recruit from other systems or we're looking at alternative licensure folks. So we can get you the information for the grade levels. Just for simplicity on the report, it's easier to do by grade levels. Otherwise, the report ends up being yea long.
Board Member Wood.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Weickert, I was interested in your comment about the virtual alternative... Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Wecker, I was interested in your comment about the virtual alternative pathway to teaching. With all due respect to our legislature, DPI, and the State Board of Education, it seems to me we need to expand the ways that a person can make it to the classroom. So, in fact, I do not understand, I've never understood why our state officials relative to, that make the recommendations and regulations for not just teacher training, but lots of different things. But I, I don't understand why they don't provide a path whereby district school system can have a teacher certific, have district teacher certification. And I hope we're moving in that direction, and I'm, I guess I'm asking the question, forming the question in a very poor manner. But can you talk a little bit more for all of us, for, for information for all of us, about the virtual alternative pathway to teaching?
So when I put that, I, I meant to put virtual and alternative, because there, there, it's part of the residency program thing. So we have several pathways in this area that folks like through East Carolina can, if they have a bachelor's degree, do the residency program. We also have our own residency program, which is primarily face-to-face, but also has some blended components. There's just a lot of different ways. So there's virtual pathways to learning. There's, there's also face-to-face, and there's blended. So we're, we're exploring every option we can to get kids, I say kids, that's, yes, young teachers certified.
Chris, can I, can I jump in?
Yes, ma'am, please.
So we, we are one of three districts in the state that can license our own teachers through our own teacher residency. And I'm, I need to know, I'm looking out, if anyone knows the exact number we have just, we've admitted that are in, I think we graduated, I don't know, did we graduate a first cohort of residency, and now we started a second? Or is, so we graduated one cohort of residency teachers, we accepted a new cohort. So we are licensing our own teachers, which is really incredible. It's a very huge cost savings for them. And so that is something we are committed to. Again, we're one of three districts that can do that. And we also still have our Transition to Teach program, which takes TAs that can go become teachers, and we send them back to school to get their, their, their degrees to finish, so that they can become teach. Trust me, every time I meet a TA, I'm like, do you want to be a teacher? What's it going to take? Let's join the Transition to Teach program.
And that's another thing we're doing for our vacancies, is we have a lot of TAs. They're very, very capable teachers. They just don't have the certifications, and we use them as TA subbing up. I would, that is a, it's, I still have to leave the job posted, because we have a lot of Title I schools, and Lord, we have to meet federal guidelines. However, sometimes TA subbing up is just as effective teaching as a permitted teach teacher who has not been in a classroom. Then we also have restart, we have restart schools that we have licensure flexibility, where we get to determine their effectiveness in all areas, with the exception of CTE and EC and guidance counseling. So.
Vice Chair Bohannon.
I just had a follow-up about the superintendent's comments. So, but the, that program is only for specific areas of licensure. Is that correct? It's not for all subjects?
Yeah, and I'm not exactly sure the licensures. Do we know the areas?
EC is one, and we have several programs that we're trying to go, EC teachers.
Yep.
Right.
Our teacher residency program now is focused on full EC teachers, including our adapted.
Right. I, I knew EC was an area. I was just curious about the other ones, the other areas of licensure.
Elementary education. Did you want to comment, Alex?
Winston-Salem Prep.
So the first cohort of teacher residency had about twenty-six people complete the program. This year, we have about sixty people in the program. And there are, I believe, over sixteen different licensure areas that are covered by our own in-house teacher residency program. Also, I'd like to remind the board that we have the Teacher and School Leader Incentive Program, which kind of helps folks be recruited. We also have the Winston-Salem Teach Program, which is a TQP federal grant, and we also have Prepare Plus, which is another TQP grant. And those are opportunities for, for folks to get their licensure, their licensure who already have bachelor's degrees.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we've got to start, I mean, to Steve's point. We have to start thinking differently and bringing people in that may have started out in a different field. When you don't have people in the, going to college to be, I'm going to be a teacher of exceptional, you know, children, we've got to grow our own, and we've got to, to do more with the lateral and get teachers into these, people into these programs. Some of our best teachers, I mean, we have, have come the traditional pathway, and some of our best have come through alternative pathways. So we've just got to keep finding folks and, and growing them.
Any additional questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, Kevin Sherrill, our Chief Technology Officer, will discuss the Lenovo Staff Laptop Refresh.
Yeah, are you okay?
Give me a little flexibility to present from here tonight. Thank you very much. Yes, so coming to you tonight, good evening, Chair Kaplan, Board Members, Vice Chair Bohannon, Ms. McManus. So looking to, for your approval to enter into our Staff Laptop Refresh. You may recall back in February, a finance committee meeting, I came to you and talked to you about our device refresh program for students and staff, which was our Chromebook and our laptop programs. And at that time, I, I shared that we were looking to move into a new program for our, for our teachers on a five-year schedule. Seven thousand four hundred devices for all staff members certified and classified that need a new device. And all those folks are carrying a five-year-old device now. So that is our, our, our schedule is on a five-year refresh plan. It's a seven hundred fifty-four dollar unit with a five-year warranty, and looking at financing that over five years with annual payments of one point three million. Yes, there's finance charges, and yes, there's taxes. So all those things come along with the overall cost of doing this. In an ideal world, we would have six point four million dollars. We could do a purchase outright and not finance it, but we, we don't have that. Financing, creating a schedule where we purchase a smaller quantity each year would have us managing five or six refresh schedules and five or six warranty schedules with repairs, which is not undoable, but a very, a lot of overhead to do that and maintain that. So that's why we have, for the past fifteen years, we've been on a five-year schedule for our teachers, and this is a refresh of that. So looking for your, your approval tonight to get the paperwork signed and move forward to start getting these in-house, so we can distribute to around Christmas, December, going into the first of the year. And our staff members will carry these all the way till January of 2030. Think I've covered everything I had on my mind there. I did just one slide, just to talk through it. So any questions I can take from you now?
Any, Board Member Crowley.
Okay, so the contract says that the financing rate is three point nine seven, but the math, unless I'm wrong, the rate is twenty-one percent for financing. So which, which is it?
If you take that-
Because I know one point two million of five point five million, there's no way that's just under four percent.
Well, you take that five point five eight four six hundred, that's pre-taxed, so that's not taxed yet. And you put that at three point nine seven percent compounded monthly on a sixty-month schedule, you get that interest rate. And then each year, you have to pay the ninety-nine thousand dollars tax, which is not in the finance charges. So I did the math on that. Those are the numbers that came out too. But to your point, as Tommy and I, as we move forward on this, we're going to comb right back through all that with our Lenovo reps to make sure that math is correct. But as I double-checked that math today with my calculators, based on what I just explained, that, that's accurate there, with the compounding interest on that base financed amount of five point five million, and then paying the tax annually on the finance part, which is not part of what's financed.
Okay.
But I would be glad to come back to your, send something in writing, once we verify all that, once again, with Lenovo. We'd be glad to do that.
And is there, what's the resale value on our current inventory?
Great, great question. So our current inventory are five-year-old laptops, and as we roll these out, we get into next spring, those will be coming back in for surplus. And each year, each refresh that we do this, we do, we do sell those out to surplus companies. Don't hold me to it, because it's based on what the market is at that time, but in the past, we've received anywhere from seventy-five dollars to a hundred dollars a piece on those. So I'll anticipate a two to three, three hundred, maybe four hundred thousand dollars coming back in on that, which Tommy and I have discussed that is coming back into the general fund for wherever it may be needed. But there will be some recoup of funds based on that sale, which will most likely happen next summer, time we get everything processed.
Okay.
Vice Chair Bohannon.
Thank you. Mr. Sherrill, just a couple of questions. I think, and I just did quick math, because it, when I looked at the total cost of the five point five, when you, and maybe I'm looking at, there's a difference between this slide, I'm, okay, now I'm seeing that, when I looked in simply, I have a unit cost of seven eighty-seven.
Yeah, and I made a mistake on that, because I picked this together other, a couple of weeks ago, and I had seven eighty-seven in my head, and that was, that was the, that was an earlier quote, so I fixed that, so yeah, seven fifty-four per unit.
Perfect. Then the, the math, kind of maths then there. Is it the, so does, the seventy-four hundred laptops, those, we don't get all of those at one time, we, or do we?
We do get all those at one time.
So we order seventy-four hundred laptops, we get them all at one time, and we replace, so do we replace everyone's laptop at once?
We absolutely do.
And we order seventy-four hundred for potential replacements, or, because we don't have seventy-four hundred employees using it?
If you count our classified folks, all the folks that need a device to do their job, it's, it's just under seventy-four hundred. We put some on the shelf, obviously, for, for break fix, but yes, yeah, we have that many.
Okay.
Teacher assistants are all included, and we have a thousand teacher assistants that are in that number. All our classified maintenance folks, everyone that's, any employee that's sitting in this room right now is included in that, all teachers, of course. So it's everyone.
Okay. And so what's, what was the device, what was the laptop that we issued previously? Was it just a different version of this?
Well, last, the last refresh we did was five years ago, and at that point, we went with an HP device. So it was an HP four fifty was the model on it.
Okay.
We are now moving over to Lenovo for cost and for, we just, our partnership with, with HP just kind of fell apart over COVID. They just, just not been the partner we need, and the pricing was higher. So we're moving to a Lenovo L fifteen, which is, it's very similar device you're using now, just a newer model of it. So it's, it's a Lenovo device going forward. And this finance agreement is with, is with Lenovo Financial, so we're going through them. All of this was a state contract negotiated bid.
And so I saw in the contract that there was an inclusion of, there was the warranty, the five-year warranty, there was also, I'm, I'm correcting if I'm wrong, is there support with the role? Like, what are, what are some additional things we get?
Well, one of the additional things we get is the etching. So I'm, I'm actually just looking at it right on top of your laptop there. So we etch our logo in the top of our devices, and now we don't have to do that. It's eleven dollars per unit to do it, and when you multiply that times seventy-five hundred, obviously, it adds up. But it is a good theft deterrent when, when our, our devices get stolen, much more than you can imagine. So having that branding on the top of the laptop that can't be removed, like a sticker, is, is one of the reasons we do that, is to, for theft deterrence. So there's that cost. In addition to that, there are some docking stations that we put into the deal, where there's some docking, the docking stations that our teachers use in the classroom. We didn't do a one-for-one on that. We, we need some of those to refresh, some that are broken, so that's in, in the plan as well, to replace some of the docking stations.
Okay. All right.
Are there any other questions or comments? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Next, Dr. Paula Wilkins, our Chief Academic Officer, will discuss the MOU for North Carolina Education Corps and the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools Partnership.
Good evening, Board Chair Kaplan, Vice Chair Bohannon, members of the Board, and Superintendent McManus. We have been fortunate to have a partnership with NC EdCorps that began in 2020 during the pandemic. Originally, it was a partnership to support the CARES team, and as we started to go back to school, we were able to think about high dosage tutoring and how we could deploy tutors to help support our students to prevent learning loss from the COVID-nineteen pandemic. We were very excited. In June, we were able to give a North Carolina State Board update about the impact of that partnership, and so we will share that data with you, so you have the impact data. And that impact data has led us to today, to be able to receive some additional grant funding to bring those tutors back part-time. So all those tutors, when we initially used ESAR dollars to support that, were part-time tutors in Title I schools. And so this grant that I'm going to have Andrew Kraft, our Extended Learning Director, to talk about the grant and its operations in this partnership, and the support it will provide our district to continue that high dosage tutoring in some of our highest need schools.
Thank you, Dr. Wilkins. Good evening, Distinguished Board, Chair Kaplan, Vice Chair Bohannon, Superintendent McManus. I'm pleased to review our partnership with the North Carolina Education Corps outlined in the MOU for this, for this program. So, the North Carolina Education Corps is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit dedicated for advancing educational excellence through an empowered community. They provide support by coordinating projects, managing grants, recruiting and training tutors, and implementing the M-class intervention curriculum, which is a research-based targeted reading intervention program. And like Dr. Wilkins said, this is our fourth-year partnership with North Carolina Education Corps. WSFCS and North Carolina Education Corps have teamed up to deliver high-impact literacy tutoring for kindergarten through fifth-grade students. They support the district by handling program planning, recruiting and training tutors, tracking sessions and evaluating the program, all funded at no cost to the district. Tutors are WSFCS employees, and the district pays their wages. The Call for Effective Action Project allows North Carolina Education Corps to sub-grant funds to the district to cover the cost of fifteen tutors for the 2024-2025 school year, which will provide tutoring to over two hundred students, actually, much higher than that, and conduct research on the impact. And this grant will allow us to continue our partnership with North Carolina Education Corps and advance tutoring strategies. Part of the project is a randomized control trial in the 2024-2025 school year involving fifteen tutors and approximately three hundred and fifteen kindergarten through second-grade students across ten Title I elementary schools. The project partners are Accelerate. They award the grant, secure the research partner, meet quarterly for check-ins. We also have North Carolina Education Corps, which secures and manages the grant, sub-grants the district to, funds to pay for the tutor wages, recruits and trains tutors, and provides the M-class curriculum. We hire and supervise the tutors, meet regularly with North Carolina Education Corps to track the program progress, and share student data with research partners. And then the fourth is the University of Michigan Youth Policy Lab, or YPL, who conducts the research study in collaboration with us and North Carolina Education Corps. Accelerate is a national initiative that supports high-impact tutoring in underserved communities. The Call to Effective Action Program funds scalable tutoring models. They support the district through awarding the grant to North Carolina Education Corps, which sub-grants funds to pay for the tutors and also fund the study. The University of Michigan YPL develops evidence-based research in collaboration with local and state agencies. YPL is supporting WSFCS by studying the effectiveness of the tutoring program and focusing on student growth and targeted skills. They will report their findings to Accelerate, North Carolina Education Corps, and us, to provide insights on the impact of the tutoring program. So what we receive is the technical assistance from the grant, grant coordination, tutor recruitment, training, coaching, the resources with the session-tracking curriculum, as well as the funding for implementation. What we provide is the participation agreement, MOU, letter of funding, data-sharing agreement, designate a district staff to oversee the project, monthly check-ins with North Carolina Education Corps, identifying up to ten schools to participate, which we have done, and selecting and employing the tutors. And for our timeline, we estimate this will start in late September of this year. We'll have our monthly check-ins, as well as a fall tutoring review in October, spring tutoring debrief in March of 2025, and then the research activities, such as the M-class data analysis. So I'm happy to open up the floor for any questions, and I also have with me the Program Coordinator for Extended Learning, Mr. Garman, who's worked extensively with North Carolina Education Corps. So if there's anything I can't answer, I'm sure he'd be happy to. So any questions?
Board Member Cade.
This, this has been through, funded through ESAR, correct, previously?
Previously.
Yes. The tutoring. Yes, okay. And were these, are these schools that were listed the same schools? So we're being consistent in those same ten schools, or have we shifted those schools?
So the way we did that was, we sent out, in the principal's newsletter, an interest form, said, if you are interested in this, apply. I believe some did.
Most are.
Yeah, but not all. So we had eleven schools apply, but ten of them were Title I, one was not, so we took those ten that were interested, and then we were able to select those as the ten.
Okay. And I guess this kind of, it may fit for the ones that had already been involved. I know that the program can go K-five. Are we doing, doing anything to follow, like, follow children who may have been K-two in the program, who may now be like a- who may now be like a third, fourth, or fifth grader, so that it is continuing the tutor on? Does that make sense?
So it does make sense. So in the first round of research, we did work with the research team, and we have some of that data. We have not specifically finalized our tutoring assignments for other tutor supports across the district, but we have assignment principles that we worked with the system, and that is included in our assignment principles to support those students.
Any other questions? Oh, yes. Board member Brown Gaither?
How were the students selected, and also, um, what is the breakdown of the students per school?
You mean for the number of students, for the grant, or just in general when we had it?
The ones that we were working with. We're working with three fifteen, because originally it said two hundred, so now we're working with three fifteen. So how did we choose those students? And then, was it evenly divided between those ten schools, or some school got more kids, or whatever?
On a per-tutor basis? Twenty-one tutors per, or twenty-one students per tutor. Uh, four, I think four of the schools are getting two tutors, maybe five, and the rest are getting one. And they're all Tier-two students, all at Tier-one schools. And the randomized, uh, research, we have to have a large pool of students, and then we randomly assign the students that get the tutoring.
So for assignment principles, when we look at M-class data, we look at students who have some risk, um, that, that tutors could support in helping them to get on, um, like, a basic level um, for meeting grade-level expectations, and so that's always been a part of our assignment principles for serving in NC EdCorps. So we're using the same process that we use for students in K-five based on data. Did that help? He told you about the number and the number of tutors and how we do assignment, but we're using the same principles that we used before with M-class data.
And then I guess I have a follow-up. Um, so we pretty much kind of started this whole process, because it's a continuation of ESER funds, kind of like continuation. So we started like on seven-one, but we're coming for approval now.
No, that's incorrect. We had to start the planning process as if we were to hire the tutor. So no students have been pulled, we don't have any student data, right? So, but we had to start the planning process, so if the board did support, because the grant was secured, to be able to say, if we get a go, we have not hired any tutors. So no tutors have been hired.
But we didn't get the grant to when?
The grant was officially approved, I feel like at the beginning of July. Yeah, we just got it, like, a month ago. And so that's why it's coming here at the first board meeting.
Vice Chair Bohannon?
Thank you. I'm sorry, I was, I, I'm probably, I probably have this wrong, but Tier-one, is that schools or students?
So let me clarify that, because sometimes we throw around that term loosely.
Right.
So we don't have any Tier-one or Two students. We have students that need certain levels of interventions.
Okay.
So we're talking about students at a certain level, meaning they have some risk, but they are not at the greatest risk. So it's students that might be in a mid-tier of needing additional support with some additional foundational skills practice that they can meet grade-level expectations.
Okay, so the tiers are, the, the, the interventions are tiered, not the students? Okay, just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Board member Crowley?
Um, regarding the data-sharing agreement, can you expand on how that works?
As far as how we share the data in aggregate with the students, so once this MOU is approved, we work with our research and evaluation department. I know they talked with Andy, and you can talk a little bit more about that, about how the data actually gets shared, because that, that's working with his.
And no data is tied to a certain student identity, it's all aggregated, right?
Yeah, it, it's all sent through Andy's office, and he can explain.
It's not on student level, but it's all masked, so they don't get a student ID, they get a masked student ID, and they don't get name or anything like that, but it's masked student ID, so they can match over years.
Are there any other questions? Okay, uh, so, Dr. Wilkins, now can you give us a HartMath progress update?
Alright, excited again to share about HartMath, which we were able to come to the board in spring of twenty-twenty-three about this opportunity. So HartMath began in Charlotte Mecklenburg schools, a specific mathematics intervention to help in the lower grades. And so we were really excited about this partnership, and one of the things we were excited about is, one, they were willing to fundraise completely to get the tutors to serve one school initially. The great thing about last year is we were not able to just serve one school, we were able to serve half the capacity to extend in a, in an additional school. So we were able to fully support Bolton Elementary, and we were able to support a great number of students at Easton, but not the same number as initially with Bolton. And so this year, as we move into the second year, we have the data update to share, and we also are able to fully fund both Bolton and Easton, moving into mathematics. And there is a video we will share with you later about the students who provided, um, just a thank you to the tutors and the support, and I'm going to invite Cindy Kramer from HartMath to share about data and outcomes. And one of the things I want to say about this team is everything from the foundation of the curriculum that they use, to the research support, to the fundraising support, it's a very strategic process, and so they've been excellent partners, and they've worked with Velvet on our team. So I'm turning it over to Cecily.
Good evening. I wanted to share a couple of program results and highlights from our inaugural year, um, working with Winston-Salem Forsyth County students. Uh, ninety-eight percent of our sixty-two students met our program growth goal, um, which is set by math specialists um, and district specialists around what would be meaningful growth for a kind of intervention that is ours, which is a twice-a-week, thirty-minute intervention focused on foundational math skills. Additionally, we surveyed teachers at the middle and the end of the year, with ninety percent of them observing an increase in student confidence as a result of the program, and that is the really two-part of our mission, strengthening foundational math skills and building academic confidence. We are very encouraged to meet these organizational benchmarks in this first year in Winston, and very grateful for both school partner's support. This gives just an additional snapshot. We had seventy-six tutors working with students, providing a little over two thousand one-on-one tutoring sessions last school year. Students on average grew in four-point-seven of our Hart concepts, although growing in two is our organizational goal, and collectively, students grew from mastering twelve percent to fifty-three percent of Hart skills needed, based on grade-level standards. Another way to look at it is through this chart. So students begin in the lowest concept area, they, they have not mastered, based on our pre-assessments, which are a one-on-one interview that we conduct before the start of tutoring. Students work as quickly as possible from left to right on that chart, with one-on-one targeted instruction that the tutors deliver, and then we post-assess the students at the end of the year. So an example that I can show is first grade in the beginning of the year, seventeen percent of the first-grade students in Hart were able to accurately count out a pile of eighteen cubes and know one more and one less. At the end of the year, eighty-seven percent of first graders were able to do that successfully. So the goal really is to see more green at the, at the bottom chart, and we worked with first and second-grade students this past year exclusively, though our program does go first through fifth. So we will be working with a lot of these students again next year to continue working them through our concepts that they still need support in. I wanted to quickly highlight our volunteer partners. Our volunteers came from twenty-eight partner organizations across the community, several of which are highlighted here, um, and very grateful for Velvet and her team, um, for tutoring at Easton and providing that support. We also, um, our funders are providing the philanthropy needed and necessary to operate our school sites. To date, we have raised a little over two-hundred thousand dollars that has funded our program in twenty-three, twenty-four, and then also our program in twenty-four, twenty-five. Lastly, looking ahead, our goal for this upcoming school year is to grow that half-site at Easton to a full school site, so we would be serving a hundred students across both of those schools, continuing to focus on our organizational benchmarks around growth in concept areas and teacher, um, finding increasing confidence and enthusiasm. We are actively recruiting volunteers, so anyone that is interested, you have thirty minutes or an hour a week. We will be matching students and tutors from now until the end of September. We're hiring a part-time program coordinator to serve at that second school site, transitioning our steering committee, and continuing to provide, provide proof of concept with plans to add additional schools pending funding that we were able to raise and volunteer recruitment. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, yes, board member Brown Gaither?
And I guess I have a question going back to Ms. Wilkins. Uh, and I know Sonali, Ms. Sonali asked a question about, she appreciated getting, she appreciated, um, getting the information, the results, as far as the program's effectiveness. Have we, as a system, looked at the kids that have been in this program, perhaps that are in third grade, have we looked at their EOG scores to see how effective the program is really for our point of view and not the program itself?
So we haven't gotten to third grade yet, so, because they, they are the.
This is the first cohort?
Correct.
Okay.
So we haven't gotten to.
Will we be tracking them?
Absolutely.
We have a, um, we're starting a partner with the data-sharing project of the district, so we've had some introductory meetings to be able to look at that kind of evaluation. We've done third-party evaluation in Charlotte, but this will be our first time to be able to do that here.
Okay.
Because it'll be for the students coming up this year.
Right, okay.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Next, Jonathan Wilkins will give us a, um, security. He's our chief safety, security, and emergency management officer, and he's going to give us an update on our safety and security.
Good evening, Chair Kaplan, Superintendent McManus, and board. I feel like I've seen you guys a lot this past few weeks, as we get things started. So I've been asked tonight to give you an update on where we are with our security and kind of just get you a little up, update as to where we are. Kevin, you got my slides, sure? Alright, there you go. So just want to start off, right, off the bat, just to right, remind you guys and the public about what we're doing with our standard response protocol. If you remember, I think two, two years ago, we started the standard response protocol from, "I love you guys," and honestly, it's been very beneficial in the way we communicate things that are happening on our campus, and it's just the three, the five actions: hold, something's happening in the building, keep students and staff where they are, secure, something's happening in the community, lockdown, something's happening on campus, evacuate. That's, that's just movement of students or staff from one place to another, or, and secure, uh, which basically is like a, a shelter in place. And I, I just, just got some numbers here just to show you, uh, how our, we, you know, we, we used to call secure a community lockdown, and since we, uh, started this, we went from twenty community lockdowns in twenty-one, twenty-two to sixteen in twenty-two, twenty-three, and only twelve in twenty-three, twenty-four. So, uh, hopefully, we'll see that number continue to drop. And, and basically, that's just our staff getting used to what's going on, uh, and how to communicate the correct language. Uh, uh, next is a, just an update on access control. If you remember, during the twenty-sixteen bond, we were given money to start access control in our middle schools, and we have done that as part of the bond, but we have also expanded that as part of our, uh, school safety grants. Anytime we get grants, we look at ways to put, uh, devices on our doors. So right now, we control three-hundred-and-fifty-two doors across the district. We started with front doors, we've moved to kitchen doors, we moved to side doors, and we continue to expand those. And if you know, remember how they work, uh, this was initially put in place for, as a security measure between the two closest points of entry between two buildings, so that staff and students limited the amount of time that they had to be outside. And so as we get more money, if you remember, in the, as part of the, uh, last safety and security grant, we asked for a lot of money, I think I asked for like two million dollars, and I only got five-hundred thousand dollars, and the plan was to add additional, uh, devices near where teachers parked their cars so they could come in, but, uh, we, we didn't get enough money to do that, but we continued to look for opportunities, uh, with grants to expand those, and, and they, then would become more like a convenience. Uh, we expanded badge, badges for all of our employees. We spent nearly ten thousand dollars on badges, all of our employees across the district, whether they were bus drivers, whether they were teachers, uh, maintenance workers, whatever, were given, uh, RFID badge, uh, car badges and, and with a picture on them, and so that they can get in and out of buildings in the places in which they are assigned. Um, wait, no, I'm not going, I'm ready, ready yet, Kevin. Uh, cameras, uh, as part of the twenty-sixteen bond, we were also asked to update our camera systems. Uh, when I first came here, most of our cameras were just, you know, digital, I mean, not digital, they were analog cameras, real grainy, black-and-white footage in many cases. Now we've got, uh, only twenty-six, over twenty-six-hundred cameras across the district with fifty-three hundred views, and those fifty-three hundred views, you, you can, almost anywhere on any of our campuses, we can, you can be seen, or if you're not seen right away, you'll be seen as you move to the next spot. And then we continue to use our visitor management system. Identikit was purchased by Syn, Synthegix, and so we continue to use, uh, that visitor management system for anyone that comes through our doors so that we can check and make sure you're not a sex offender, or that you're not on the no-go list, uh, for some reason. Next slide. Metal detection. Uh, this is something that we started, uh, two years ago as well, um, and then we've kind of just, it's grown. So metal detection, we have, can do metal detection for several reasons. Number one is an administrative search. We have reason to believe that a student, uh, has something on their person, uh, or in their vehicle, and so we conduct an administrative search to make sure that they do not have, uh, what they're suspected of having. Uh, athletic and extracurricular events, especially in large events like football and lar, and large basketball games, we, we make sure that visitors and, and fans go through those uh, metal detecting devices so that we can just, you know, what, know what's coming into the building. You can't go to an athletic event anywhere in this country. You can't really go see a play at the Tanger Center without going through a metal detector these days. And then if you have, we have a threat or a reasonable suspicion, uh, we do metal detecting, random safe entry, that's our safe entry program. We do that in our middle and high schools on a random basis. Uh, Ms. McManus told this past week to the news, and I talked to him as well, saying that we are going to greatly expand the random safe entry. So we, right now, we do it at a, at a whole-school level, but we're also going to try it on randoms, on random rooms, and principals really have to look into, you know, how you choose a random room and, and what that pattern looks like so that you're not singling any room out. But in our discussions with, um, Chea and OpenGate, uh, Mr. Ammons here went with me when we viewed the OpenGate system, I'm going to tell you about. Uh, across the country, school systems are using whole-school, uh, entry systems, but, but also picking out random rooms, just to keep people on the Ps and Qs. Traditional metal detectors, you see the number that we have, we bought, we sold, bought seventy-three Garrett's, ninety-four Cheas, these are great devices. These devices will find anything. Uh, you can't come through with any metal, and so that is somewhat problematic, because although you can't get anything in, it slows us way, way down. So what we want to do is try new system, and so what we did was we took our school safety grant money. If you remember, I came to you last year and said we wanted to do several things, and one of them was put vestibules in schools. Our vestibules came back way, way high. We thought they were going to cost us ten thousand dollars, thought, then we were told they might be forty thousand dollars. The first bid came back, it was seventy-two thousand dollars, up to a hundred thousand dollars for a vestibule that was as close to, you know, the first one was from me to that Winston-Sophomore South County School sign. So spending seventy-two thousand dollars for that is too much, we're not doing that, and so we opted to purchase eight OpenGate systems to use as a pilot. You saw OpenGate the other day, basically it's two poles you walk through, uh, it's very discriminatory, you can set the settings where you want it to be, and if it works the way it's supposed to work, then we will have a free flow of students. If it sets off that one student, we pull aside, but we should be able to do this three to four times faster uh, with one of these, with one of these systems than we could with these other devices, and then, uh, we'll figure out how to get more in the future if, if that's the way, uh, if that's the way we choose to go. Uh, and then finally, and again, that was purchased with school safety funds. Um, and then lastly, we continue our relationship with the South County Sheriff's Office with our SRO program. Uh, there's thirty-nine staff members total, but from SROs to command staff with the sheriff's office, and there's six, um, officers with KPD, again, with SROs up through the command staff and roving staff as well. So with that, I will take any questions that you have for the school's safety, and then I have a, a, a guest to introduce to you.
Okay, Vice Chair Bohannon?
Thank you. Just a couple of questions. So, um, Jonathan, I, I want to, okay, I'll go backwards. So, when you were discussing the devices, you said they're very discriminatory. What, you meant in terms of the items, like?
Well, I, I get, I'm, I'm, I don't know if I use the right wording, but, so basically, we, we can, we, we can do the settings on the device, so I could, I could make it as, as sensitive as to pick up small, little tiny items, but I also could make it where it would pick up nothing but a big, but a, a long gun. So we're going to fix it where it would pick up any handgun or knife that would come into our door, uh, that could cause harm.
Okay.
Now, I would, I do want to say something, because I've heard it from questions from the news and from some of you guys. Uh, we never banned the use of three-ring binders.
God.
What we said about the three-ring binders was that a three-ring binder, no matter what device we use, is going to set it off. So in order to not slow down the process, we, we, we asked students not bring three-ring binders unless they absolutely had to. We, we know we're going to have to pass a Chromebook around. There's no way a Chromebook's ever going to go through a metal detector. A, a, a music instrument will never go through a metal detector, so we pass those around, but something as simple as a three-ring binder will always going to set, is always going to set that device off, because it sees that piece of metal that holds it together as a knife. And so, uh, Mr. Ammons and I, again, Captain Ammons and I, again, we, we talked to Chea about how we can do that. We could fix it where it won't pick it up, but if it doesn't pick that up, it's not going to pick up the knife either.
Okay, then the second question was about the random, the rooms, the, the, what you mentioned about the, the random room select. Could you talk a little bit more about that? Because it's the first.
Yeah, so we've not done, we have not done that yet. This is something that we want to do, and so, this is, this is, so for example, that, that we have testing week, and it's not, it's so easy to, to get kids in late, next two weeks of school is really, really busy, backing up traffic. So there are other ways that we could do random metal detection without holding up an entire school. It's maybe. It's maybe picking out three rooms randomly. Maybe my team chooses, or maybe the random generator, maybe we take a dart and throw it at a map on the school and say, that's the one we're going to do. Sorry about the sound effects there. But we would choose a way in which we could do that, but it has to be, it has to be completely random and approved as random.
Okay, thank you.
So Board Member Coon, and then Board Member Crowley.
Thank you. On the OpenGate, there's eight of those. Obviously, we've heard some things from the community, from a couple of our schools that have been communicated with because of the OpenGate. When, are those going to travel? Because there's not enough, obviously, to be at both of those schools, and then obviously, when I was with you at the other day. How does that work? Can you explain that?
So without telling you what the plans are in public here, what we have developed a plan where they would be used, those eight devices would go to one school and be used for a certain amount of time, probably the first, first half of a quarter. Then we'll pick them up and move them, they'll go to another set of schools for the second half of the quarter. And then we do that throughout the year. Our plan is such that we can get all of our high schools and most of our middle schools touched by those devices in the year, and what we really want to do is see if they work.
Okay.
They're not cheap, but what I would say is, my team is very conservative in the way we spend money. Tommy loves to hear that, right? So we're not going to spend any money unless we know that the system's absolutely work. So we want to see if they work in a small school, in a big school, a school with multiple buildings, a school with one single building, how they work in a middle school versus a high school, because every school has its own flavor, has its own culture, and has its own way they do things. So if it doesn't work in a particular school, then we'll move to Plan C. But, you know, that's the idea, is to test them in different ways as a pilot, as a proof of concept.
Okay, and so to follow up on that, the traditional metal detectors will continue to be used as the random, random means, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Now, obviously, we still have the same kind of issues with lines and such. Has there been communication with buildings on attendance, tardies, anything like that, that principals are going to not accept tardies on metal detecting days?
What, I'm not, I'm not understanding the question, I'm sorry, Board Member Coon. So if a child is...
So on days where there is a metal detecting day, even if there is a line, that they're no longer going to be accepting tardies on these days?
What do you mean by accepting?
Like, teachers are not going to accept that you're late because of metal detecting?
Oh, well, if we're doing a metal detect, if, you mean if the children are in line, and we're holding them in line, and then they get to class?
Correct.
They're not tardy. So yeah, we need to make sure that that is not happening. Well, if they're in a line because we're doing something that's creating a line...
They won't accept the excuse, they won't accept it, they won't, yeah.
If you arrive at school late, you're tardy. If you stand in a line because we've caused a line for a process we're doing, you're not tardy. So we need to make sure that that's cleared up, yeah, definitely.
Thank you.
I've not heard of any school, any student being listed as tardy when they're standing in a metal detecting line. If it's happened, then yes, we would correct that. But I will say that we have gotten much faster at metal detecting than we did when we first started. But it's very, very time-consuming, and it's very, very, it takes a lot of staff in order to do it, so we're going to make it faster.
Okay.
Other questions for me? Yes, ma'am.
Yes. With the new cellphone policy, we've had a lot of parents ask about if there will be cameras in classrooms. Is there a plan for that, since kids don't have, wouldn't be able to use their cellphone to video something? Will there be?
I would tell you that there are no cameras in classrooms in Winston-Salem County Schools as of today.
Okay.
Would I like them in classrooms? I would, but that's going to be a lot of money, so.
Well, we already have the cameras. We have all the ones that are on tripods, I would think they could be, you know, that we use for remote learning. I was thinking we could have them mounted and put, I mean, we do have the cameras, right?
Kevin, I think, yeah. As far as the stor, so there's a problem with the storage on the cameras that you're talking about versus our...
People will be using low-end webcam and connecting to the system.
Yeah.
They would work for a Zoom call or a Teams call, but their cameras are $99 PC cameras, they're not available.
Okay.
To store it in our system is a lot...
But we do have cameras, okay. Okay, and then, this is a really important question. At events this year, will we be able to bring in purses? Is there going to be a purse or bag policy? Is there going to be a clear bag policy, or are we back to?
Okay. I was not prepared for that question. I mean, we're doing a clear bag policy, so I would say that, just like what you would carry to, to see Wake Forest, I mean, if you were a Wake Forest fan, if you went to Appalachian to see a real football team, then I would say that, then, then you, then you'd have to carry a clear bag, or a clutch, or you have to carry something by a certain size. I think most of our school districts are going to the same thing that we did. I've spoken to several school districts, so as far as saying that you couldn't carry a purse, I think a purse would still fit the size, now if it's a big purse.
Yeah. It just seemed like it was different at every school, and I would watch these little old ladies truck all the way from the parking lot, get to the metal detector, and then then tell her she couldn't have her purse, and then she'd have to go all the way. I mean, so I'm just trying to figure, what is the policy this year?
What I'd like to do is go back and talk to Mr. Sullivan to see what exactly is going on in football game days. I'm assuming that's the biggest part you're talking about. And we either need to communicate it more clearly that you don't bring a purse if we're not going to allow it, or we need to be a little, have a little leniency and say, okay, this is somebody who don't need to walk back to their car, and let's look through it. But you got to let us look through it if you want to come here.
Or if you're going through a metal detector, why aren't you allowing them to bring a purse? It seemed, it seemed kind of austere to do both.
It's a very fair question. So if we get to the point where we're doing the OpenGate, for sure, but we're not going to use OpenGates outside this year. I don't want to put those outside, I don't know their work. But we can have further conversation, I understand your question completely.
Vice Chair Bohannon.
So I have one question that, so the expectation is still for all employees, when you're at work, to be wearing your badges, is that correct?
It is.
So on the first day of school, during school visits, and then some of the feedback that I received from board members that were doing their visits, is that there were staff members who did not have badges, and that might be due to, I think in large part, it was due to the fact that some of them were new, and they hadn't gotten their badges yet. So what's the process around, like, how do we, what is the process for, like, when you become a new employee, for you to go and get your badge from HR?
I'm looking at...
That might be a Dr. White question.
Dr. White, here, what I would say is, we, but every person who was an employee last year, we brought them in and gave them new badges. As employees are hired, then, go ahead.
That's a nice loaded question, because the, once the employees get through, always the process, they get through technology. So in other words, they, from hire to email address point, at that point, we can then issue them the badge. So employees either come to central office and get their badge made, or the financial manager will take a headshot of them, send it to us in a folder, and then we do them, and then we create the badge, and then send it to the courier to the schools. With 600 employees, we've got about 200 of them done.
Okay.
So it's a process.
Okay.
We can help expedite, I think.
Well, the follow-up is, is there a way to, because if that's a priority, if the expectation is that we ensure that staff have their badges, that they're appropriately identified, then is there a way that we can streamline that? Or if there are new, you know, some resources needed or something?
The technology issue comes until they're loaded in the system. We can create them a badge, but it will not get them in any doors. So that's where we run into the issue. We were actually looking at this, and it came to my attention last week. I'm like, what do you mean, you're making a badge that ain't going to work? And they were explaining it to me, so it's something we have to address.
Okay.
But if we have a badge without a, that doesn't work, then...
Chris, are they loaded in the system during their onboarding?
They're loaded in the system once we send the staff action through payroll, and then the technology team gets it, and then they, it goes through a process there, and at some point, they're loaded so they get sent.
So is that before or after their onboarding session?
After. So they got an orientation, then once they pass criminal background check, drug testing, then we send the action through, through EPAS, which then goes to payroll and technology. And I'm looking at Kevin to make sure I'm not misspeaking, is that?
Yeah, so they have that email, Chris, they have a network channel that's interacting directly with the house all of you, and that feeds the badge system that it's in their name and appropriate door access based on, or...
Right, is there any way during the onboarding, when they're already in person, we could take all their photos, have them stored, and then as soon as their thing comes through, so they're not taking pictures and sending them?
That's an idea we were discussing.
Okay.
So, it says moving the camera to wherever we're doing orientation, but we're working on that.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions?
So with that, I want to introduce you to Chief Deputy Henry Gray. I've known Mr. Gray here for most of my 30-some years of my career, and so I think he's going to bring an initiative from the sheriff's office.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I am Chief Deputy Henry Gray from the Forsyth County Sheriff's Office. I'm standing in for Sheriff Bobby F. Kimbrough, who brings his greetings. I would like to show you a video reference to an, to a added layer of security. With the board's permission, I would like to talk while it's being played, if that's okay, for the sake of time.
Sure.
I would like to thank the board, Vice Chair Bohannon, Madam Chair, the Superintendent, Ms. McManus, for allowing me the opportunity to share with you about another layer of safety for our schools with the drones and the docks, or some refer to as drone in a box. Our intent is to place the drone in a dock strategically in locations near some schools for the purpose of responding to any type of critical incident that may occur on school campuses. This is, incidents include hold, secure, lockdown, evacuations, or shelters in place. Drone in a dock is another set of eyes that we intend to utilize before school, after school, during critical incidents, to canvass all, all around the school perimeter, to ensure that there's no imminent threat on or around the students, faculty, or staff. Drones are a tool to ensure the students' arrival and departure from the school bus and cars are safe. The safety of our students, faculty, and staff is a priority. It is another set of eyes, just like the camera systems that you have, but it's mobile and it's in the air. So in closing, we value our partnership with the school system. The relationship we have developed over the years is paramount. We are committed to working together to keep the students and faculty and staff safe. If you have any questions for me, I have Mr. Basil Yapp of RX, and I have members of my drone team here, if you have any questions to what I said.
Any questions?
Thank you for allowing us to speak today, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, well, this concludes our discussion items. We are moving on to action items. We have five action items to consider. First, consider the approval of the Lenovo staff laptop purchase. Do I have a motion?
May I approve?
Do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion by Board Member Miller, a second by Board Member Watts. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes. Board Member Crowley?
I'm absolutely for doing the refresh of technology. I am absolutely against spending 1.2, over 1.2 million in finance fees for, which is 21% of the total cost here. That's, that is extreme, and I think we should all pause on this and think about the best way to fund this. I, like I said, I'm in support of the 5.5 million to do the refresh, but I can't be on board with 1.2 million in superfluous fees because we don't have it upfront.
Mrs. McManus, would you, Superintendent, did you want to speak to that?
So, I'm going to turn it over to Kevin because...
I'll say that, yes, that some of, what you're saying is true, but some of that number is the taxes. So not all that is finance charges, some of that is taxes that we would pay, whether we purchased outright or not. I would love to do that, too. I would love to buy a home without paying finance charges and all those things. If we've got the money to refresh laptops, ideally, that's the way to do it. Historically, we have not had $6 million once every five years to buy these devices, therefore, we find, we've been financing them, and this will be the third time we have done a deal very similar to this, to get our staff members what they need. So I would, I would go on record and say that I completely agree with you, and I would love to do it that way. And if it's the board's pleasure to do that, and Mr. Krantz, we find the funding to do that, then I, then hands down, going into debt is not the way to do anything in life, in my opinion. But how do we do that? And our teachers need devices now. So that's...
I mean, the cho, to choices, we don't have money to fund the rest, like, if we were going to say we want to do it all now. So we either fund it as it is, or we buy, what is the amount we have, three-point, what is the amount we actually have to give now?
Dollar-wise?
Yeah.
We have $2 million appropriated from the county for, for device refresh. We asked for 4.3 million, if you recall.
Right.
We asked for 4.3, if you remember, and that was for students and staff. We don't have a student plan right now. That's something else we're coming back to you guys about after we do some more work. We are not buying any student devices this year, because we were not able to secure any funding. So we are holding with what we have this year with no new student devices, which we cannot continue to do every year. But we have $2 million appropriated, and we, we were going to use that to get our staff program rolling at 1.4 million of the two, which leaves us 600,000 of that appropriation designated for staff and student refresh. So the money is designated for it, it doesn't solve the fact that we're spending finance charges, yes.
Vice Chair Bohannon.
So the other thing I wanted to say is this, and I think that this is why, so to the point, I would love it if we didn't have to pay interest. I personally feel like it would have been nice if we would have gotten the money to be able to do it. But the other thing also is about, Kevin's team has to service, like, has to work with these devices. And if you break it up and you say, okay, we're only going to buy one-fifth of those devices right now, you take the risk of those devices not being available if you wait until the next year to buy them. Then we have to look at another device. Then potentially, five years down the line, everybody doesn't have the same device, and you have, you have one group of staff with one device, one group of staff with another device, and that doesn't work. We need to be uniform regarding the devices that people have, at least so that Kevin's team can, that can be better for his team, so that we're not all over the place. I think that this is, and to utilize fund balance, which would only, which would be our only option, if we wanted to buy it all now, is an impossibility. We might, we might, we might have it available, but that would be a ridiculous decision to make, in my opinion. So I feel like we either have an opportunity to do it this way, or we try our luck with buying a certain amount based on the money we have now, but then we're back with the county for next year, asking for another allocation, and potentially also risking not being able to do the, like, I just feel like there are too many, there are too many things and outstanding questions not answered, especially given the fact that this is the way that we've done this for years. And with technology, I just feel like being, it's important that teachers have the devices they need to be able to do their jobs, and that we're not really... Sorry?
No, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. I'm good.
Are you good? Okay. Board Member Wood?
Thank you, ma'am. Kevin, I just have to ask this question, in case there's some angels out there listening. Some folks that have some deep pockets somewhere, companies or individuals. Are there any provisions in the contract, penalty provisions for early payoff?
No, with any finance deal, I'm sure we can pay off anything early if we, and I'm sure Tommy loves people with deep pockets that could help us, but, so no, there would not be any penalty to prepay, prepay a loan.
Okay, we send a message out there, looking for some deep pockets, so.
Any other questions? Yes, Board Member Coon.[1722.72]
And just to clarify, you mentioned the taxes were 99, say that again?
The taxes on a lease, it's called a lease agreement, even though it's a finance agreement of this nature, are very complicated, and you pay taxes on the sum of the payments. So the taxes are $99,000 per year.
Okay.
And I can, I feel like for more clarity for you guys, I could get Lenovo to give us a true breakdown of how that's calculated, but the taxes are not part of the financed portion.
So that's half a million dollars.
Taxes are paid upfront once a year. Correct. On a $6 million base. There's a usage tax in there, too, when you finance devices that are used by employees, so there's, it's not just straight sales tax.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Board Member Watts?
Mr. Wood? Steve, great suggestion. I would like to charge someone in our central office staff to seek out some grants, some funding, and if we pay it off early, fantastic. I think we've got a lot of great people in our community, and great industry, and great foundation, saying, look, we really need this technology grant. We really need this, we did not get fully funded from the county commissioners, so we really need somebody, someone, some people, some organization, says, would you please step up and help us on this piece? And I think maybe we can find a way to solicit grants or some other donations to help us on this project.
That's a good idea. That could be honestly, and that's a great idea for like our foundation as a, yeah, to go, because even, even taking on the $500,000 of taxes would cut those extra fees down by half, right? The extra million-dollar fee, so that's a great idea. If all of those were great ideas, we could pay off early, which would be less. We could find a foundation to support it.
I'd like to add one more thing, if I could. Those of you that have been on this journey for years, if you recall, our last schedule was a four-year schedule that we stretched to five. And if you polled our teachers right now, the problem with the, with the mobile devices, the laptops, is the batteries. The batteries are not designed to last five years. I don't care which device you buy. Can you put a cord on it and plug it in and keep using it? You can, but that makes it not a laptop at that point, if you're no longer mobile. So withstanding the battery life is why we have to refresh these on at least a five-year schedule. Four would be even better, but we moved it to five to cut the cost down. So that's the real tangible piece that we're dealing with in our classrooms, is that the batteries will not hold for the current devices that our teachers have. And of course, as software requirements go up, the older technology, the slower processors, the lower RAM, it's just got to, you got to upgrade it.
Our teacher, I mean, and you all have been in classrooms, I mean, I've not been in a classroom that they're not using their laptop to project something, a video, a lesson, whatever that is. So I will say, not all districts, like, this is a perk to me with our employees, to give them that tool, because not all districts do that. Not all districts give the employee a laptop. And I don't know, how much if you just went on the street and bought a laptop these days? How much?
We're buying a fairly low-end laptop on top of that $750. A laptop is $1,500 for a retail price usually, so we're negotiating a government education price.
So we've had, we have a motion, we have a second, we've had discussion, all in favor. Opposed? Motion passes, seven to two. Next, consider approval of the NC Ed Core Grant appropriation. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion by Board Member Crowley, a second by Board Member Watts. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Okay. Motion passes. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, there was a little conversation going on. Motion passes unanimously. Next, consider approval of the Education Resource Group contracts for Con Oak Middle School, Carver High School, and Clemens Middle School. Do I have a motion?
Second.
So I have a motion by Vice Chair Bohannon, a second by Board Member Watts. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes. Board Member Kuhn?
I am just curious. I know that the, these are being paid for with Title I funds. However, I'm curious, if we are looking at the outcomes, because some of our schools are using this group, you know, quite often, and spending quite a bit of money over the past three years. And if this is something that is bringing outcomes for these schools, should it be that we are looking at this group in a different way, and looking at them more from a district perspective, and using district PD dollars, so that our schools can use their Title I dollars for actual persons in their building versus spending, in a couple of cases, close to, I had paper a minute ago that had it on there, now I can't find it, but, you know...
Yeah. So I, what I will say is that the majority of schools' Title I dollars are spent on personnel. You really should not spend your entire bucket on personnel. I mean, that is like in your Title I guidelines, but they spend the majority. Then they spend some on other things, apparent involvement. They spend some on student activities. It could be special field trips. I mean, there's guidelines around Title I, but professional development is a part of Title I, like, recommended dollars. As far as the district taking that on with all the schools that are wanting to use ERG, and I will say, the ones that have used it are seeing, they are tracking direct benefits. That's why they come back and want to use it again. But they are, to do that as a district, like, I count, I think I added up all the ones from last year, that would be a large, I mean, it's more personalized when it is like a site-by-site decision on how they want to actually use that company in their schools, and they all use them differently. Again, that's why they have those Title I, they, to have the flexibility to say, I want to bring in somebody to support, that's why they have those dollars. But I will say, the majority of their dollars are used for personnel. As we break that down, they are used for personnel.
And I understand that. I just, I look at if, I hear a lot of talk about personal, personal development, and a lot of schools are wanting more personalized personal development, and it seems this company has a hold in our district, and they're getting, they're making a lot of money off of our schools. And I just, if there is a way that they could be using those Title I dollars for field trips, or for other student-focused things, and the district could offset some of this because we do have personal development dollars, I don't know. It's just...
Yeah. We don't, so when you look at our, and I love the point you're making, and I promise if I could say, oh, we've got a lot of money to be able to take stuff like that on, and for PD, the answer is, we don't. Title II is truly your only bucket of money. We have very little in local for PD. It's mostly out of Title II, or like for principals, it might be out of Wallace. There's maybe a little bit built into Title IV, for your student services staff, but there are not a lot of funds. That's why I always get upset when federal government talks about cutting Title II. That truly is your only bucket. But out of that bucket, you're paying some of your coaches, your instructional coaches. So, so again, there are not that many dollars for, so for schools to say, I want that PD, and I'm going to use Title I to do it, we encourage that, because, again, we don't have a lot of money sent, like, local, centrally, to be able to do that. We have a little bit through Title II, that goes for district-wide PD, but not enough, like, if they're, if they're spending, you know, 30,000, now with ESAR, we could have done that, but without that, if I want to do a contract for 30,000 in one school, we can't, we would not be able to have the means to do that, which is why, unless we took it off, Title I off the top, but then you have to make sure you have a lot off the top, which is, it just, it doesn't work, it doesn't work that well, that way. So, again, that kind of like, if I got a, have a $3,000 Title I budget, and I'm going to spend 20,000 on a contract, I'm going to spend the majority on personnel, and then I'm going to spend some on student activities and parent, it just, this is the best model, in my opinion, for that personalized approach to PD in a school. But again, if the day that we get more in PD, I'll, we'll take it on, we'll do it, we'll do contracts that go off the top. We do some, I mean, we did some, like, the other day, we brought in instructional empowerment. We used some of the off-the-top Title II, or some of the carryover, to, I think, support four or five schools. So we do it sometimes, but we just, we don't have the means to take that approach all the time.
So... Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion, a second, we've had some discussion, all in favor. Okay, opposed? Oh, you're, you're, okay. Okay, motion passes unanimously. Next, consider approval of capturing kids parts contract for Con Oak Middle School. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion by Board Member Miller, a second by Board Member Crowley. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor.
Thank you.
Motion passes unanimously. Next, consider approval of the EC nursing contract with Forsyth County Department of Public Health. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
So I have a motion by Board Member Crowley, a second by Board Member Miller. Any discussion?
Is there any way that we can get this sooner, rather than after the school year has already started?
Can anyone answer that?
Deion's answering it.
This one did come to us over the summer, and so this, this being our first board meeting to approve that, that's why this one was a little bit late. So we will work on getting that done quicker next year.
Okay.
So just as a follow-up, that, when you say, Deion, it came to us, is that, that means the county sent it over for us to go through our, like, what does that mean?
Yes, we did receive this one, and our other nursing one that doesn't have any money attached to it from the county.
Okay. But the start date for the contract was when?
It would be the first day of school.
Okay.
Is when they would be in the buildings.
Because of the, so, but they were in this, they were, they were in the schools on the first day, right?
Yes, that's my understanding, yes.
Okay. And I, I think just from my perspective, it's just about the, and I get it, if you, there, we're not meeting during that time, but it, it's a weird place to be in when you don't have an executed contract, but you have people in your building kind of working. So that, that's just my thing, is like, if we can just make sure, moving forward, that we can, even if it's a, like, you need, you need a special call meeting or something, I would, I would rather us do that than be in a situation where we've, you know, this situation.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any additional discussion? Okay, all in favor. Thank you, that passes unanimously. Our next order of business is our superintendent's update.
Before I give my update, just so that we clarify then, so who is our staff member that works directly with the Health Department on this contract?
On the EC nursing?
Uh-huh, yeah. Is that, is that our EC department? Who works, so that we know, because that person's the one that will need to talk to the county and say, we need this contract in June, so who would that be, so we can...
So it would, it would normally go to Dr. Holland, but this one did not go to Dr. Holland, so...
Okay. But you do have, so Dr. Holland can speak to the Health Department and let them know that, starting next summer, our board would want this in June, so would that be, okay. I just want to, I just want to assign it to someone, so we know next year we have it for the last June board meeting. Okay, thank you. Okay. All right, thank you. So update, here we go. So welcome back. We're here, we're here. Second day of school today. So, thank you, we, we had our count, and I, and I don't see how this is accurate, but I'm gonna, it doesn't seem accurate, because every school I've been at are bursting, like, they have more kids than they planned to have. So we need to make sure that, that all this is up to date. But I will say, in schools that, like, this morning, I stopped at Con Oak Middle, they had 90 students that weren't there on the first day, but they got on the phone calling them, and they had 20 more today from that 90, and they're going to keep doing that call. I think part of it, we've got to make sure, but I, I think we did a lot of messaging about, we're back early. I think we need to keep messaging it, and keep calling, and making sure, because, I mean, people aren't used to this, even though we've messaged it, you, you know, it doesn't always, people aren't used to this, this early start. So that's about how many kids we had yesterday, but again, many of the schools I have visited said they have more students than they did last year, so I'm sure I'll get to some that must have less, because they have that number. But anyway, it was a great day yesterday. I will say that I've received, even with transportation, I've received, and I have a slide about that, but I've received positive, I sent you all an email from a parent, and, and you'll see, you'll see some, some stats in just a minute that I'm excited about. But again, thank you, everyone. Our community was incredible yesterday. There were people across the district at schools welcoming kids in, from the symphony at Ward playing, to, we had our, our law enforcement partners at different schools, we had WSSU at schools, we had fraternities and just sororities at different schools. It was all in effort, and what, we welcomed back our students with a lot of excitement. Now we want to keep that excitement going. I will tell you that we did several, we have several handbooks that we sent out, I did a message last Wednesday to parents that went out, it was a video message that talked about updates. We talked about our cell phone policy, we talked about three documents they would be receiving links to, and those were our Code of Character Conduct to Support, our Parents' Guide to Student Achievement, and our Student Parent Handbook. These documents are pretty extensive. I think with the code, we also have an executive summary, like a one-pager, so those things went out with links all in one place last week. They're also on the webpage for what's new. I think, just like with everything else, we need to keep reminding people of where to go, and that has to be both from the district level to the school level. So we will continue with messages to parents, reminding around the cell phone policy. I will tell you, to do things like massive change like that, it takes daily reminders for people, and we need to keep at that. If we don't do it, it's just like when you asked today about the bag, the bag policy for games, it's because if you don't stay on stuff, it just starts to wean off. So we have to really stay on all of our messaging, and that is what we're committed to do. Kevin, you can turn it. Here are different things that we've done last year with all of our expectations. First of all, what was so powerful this summer is staff all came together and talked about for the first time, what are all the communications we need to get out to kids and families, and how do we do that together so that our, our communications team can work at, on all of this at the same time? And it resulted in lots of alignment, lots of working together across departments, and I think it took a load off communication. It didn't take a load off, it just took, it was just more organized for communications this year. But these are all the different ways that we are sharing all of our updates. Social media has been very active, posters in schools, news stories, but we're going to keep that going. Next, here's that transportation page. So, you know, are there individual issues that may have occurred? Absolutely. And were the transportation team on those? Yes, they've been very responsive to those, but I just wanted you to take a minute and look at some of these stats. One of the ones that was most exciting to me is that all of our buses, last night, when I got that final, all buses are parked. It was 40 minutes earlier than last year. That was a huge celebration, so to our transportation team. I will say, one of the numbers on here that is concerning is our 84 unescorted students. So I just want to remind our kindergarten, it's kindergarten, first grade, right, team? Kindergarten, first grade, and second? K-1, 2, need to have an adult present at the bus stops. And so we had 84 that did not have that on the first day, so that's something we need to really work on. And so you can see the rest. Edge Log has actually been working well. I will say, I think in the morning of our press conference, one of the reporters said that he had seen something on social media that maybe it wasn't. It might have been a lot of people at one time downloading the app that morning, but I've gotten some pretty good feedback about Edge Log. So again, if anyone's having issues with that, they need to just reach out to someone in transportation, or someone from the leadership team, and we can get them information for that. So again, all of that transportation, we're, we're working at it. One thing that we announce, that is, that has been a concern for some families, and for staff, actually, that have brought it up, is that if, if students did not turn in, or families did not turn in their request by a certain date, then unless it's already a planned stop, that's easy to give a child a pass to. But if it is a new stop, a new stop that has to be created, that takes additional time, and so that's, parents were told upfront, it would take till September, what was the date? September 3rd. I, I've sent Tisha a text today, is there any way we can move that up a little bit? Because what we, those kind of things are imperative, like, that we have the time, but we worry about some of our students not getting to school, so we're working on that as well. But anyway, any questions about transportation, board members, or comments? All right? And that was it for the update. It's, we've started out great, and I will tell you, and I want to say, I've told the board this, but I want to say publicly that the early start caused staff to turn, to move into very well-planned, methodical processes this summer to make sure our facilities were ready. And so I think, as far as from a facility standpoint, transportation standpoint, I feel like this has probably been the year that we've probably had the smoothest, smoothest rollout. And so I think it's all that planning, and we will, we will have learned from this summer, and we'll continue that even when we have a normal summer. Same with our hiring, our HR department, they've been processing folks, principals have been hiring all summer, so we had a great start. Thank you all for going out tomorrow into, I mean, yesterday into the field. We're going to keep visiting schools all year, and, and that visibility shows how much we value them. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much, so much, for everything. So next, we're moving on to our consent agenda. As an action item, consider approval of the general personnel report. Do I have a motion?
No motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion by Vice Chair Bohannon, a second by Board Member Kuhn. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Thank you, that is unanimous. So our next meeting will be August 27, 2024. Before we begin our public comments, let me say good evening to Cable 2 viewers. Thank you for watching, and this will conclude our broadcast.
Thank you for joining us on your school channel, Cable 2.